Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for bringing us together safely this evening. As always, we thank you for the many blessings we enjoy. As we begin this new year, open our hearts to kindness, understanding, tolerance, and respect. We ask for your guidance as we consider the matters before us this evening. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness. In your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. I wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody Happy New Year. Our first order of business this evening is to elect the President of the Hammond Common Council for 2019. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as your President for the past two years. It's been a challenge and an education on several levels. I especially want to say thank you to the residents for your notes, phone calls, and conversations of encouragement. I am forever grateful for your support. Now for the business at hand. The Chair will entertain a motion to open nominations for President.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we nominate Bob Markovich as President of the Hammond Common Council in the year of 2019. I so move.
Alrighty. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. Clerk Golick, is it necessary that we do a roll call vote or just a voice vote?
You could do either. Voice vote will be fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, President Markovich.
You can do Vice President, not Chair adjourned.
Nope, that's your job.
Thank you, everybody, for your vote of confidence. Chair would entertain a motion for Vice President for the year 2019.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I nominate Dave Warple for Vice President.
Motion by Councilman Rakos for nomination of Dave Warple for Vice President. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Chair would entertain a motion for Dave Warple for Vice President for the Hammond City Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations and thank you, everybody. Next order of business is reading of the minutes. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from December 17, 2018, and be placed on file.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson. Motion to approve the minutes as read. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Approval of claims. Councilman Warple.
Mr. President, I move that we approve claims, beginning with claims dated 1/7/19 and ending with claims dated 1/9/19. Claim 1 through 3/46 inclusive.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs for approval of claims. Councilman, would you like to go ahead and give the claim numbers and the dates and the total amount, please?
Yeah, it was, again, beginning with claims dated 1/7/19 and dated through 1/9/19, claim number 1 through claim number 3/46. And it comes to a total of $12,928,409.56.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All, roll call.
Markovich. I'm sorry. Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Markovich. Yes.
Claims are approved, nine in favor, zero absent. Public hearings. We have one public hearing in ordinance to create Fund Number 241 and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2019 sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. Ordinance 18-32.
Thirty-one.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or against ordinance 18-31? Anyone wish to speak in favor of or against 18-31?
Eighteen thirty-one or thirty-two?
Thirty-one. Eighteen thirty-one, according to the agenda. Anyone wish to speak in favor of or against 18-31? Public hearing is closed. Next item is communications. Chair would entertain a motion on communications.
Madam President, I mean, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received the correspondence from, I guess, the 311 app in regards to bling. There's no speed limit signs that can't understand why drivers are going so fast only on two blocks between Waltham and Lewis on Highland and bringing concerns to the students of Eggers Middle School residents and also the area going towards Eggers Middle School in the same street bling. Numerous vehicles parked blocking the view of marking and safe rights and lefts of Lewis Street to either go south or north before and after school during regular times are coming from the north towards Lewis. If these vehicles, usually large trucks, are parked there, you can't see traffic coming out of Lewis. I have taken pictures, a few videos. I can't figure out how to send them through this app. Thank you for your time. Have a blessed day. Submitted 1/10/2019.
Any other communications? Any other communication? Any other communication? Communications are closed. Committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Finance Committee will be reporting out 1831.
Are there any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
At this time, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Friday, January 18th, Community Watch at Silver Birch will be at 2:00 p.m. Thursday, January 17th, Hessville Crime Watch will be at the Jean Shepherd Center at 7:00 p.m. Lafayette Neighborhood Watch is Wednesday, January 16th at Lafayette School at 6:30 p.m. Thursday, January 17th, South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at 7:00 p.m. This is an opportunity for everyone to visit a crime watch in their neighborhood to find out what's going on in their neighborhood and safety measures that they can take to protect themselves, their property, and their family. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Ordinance is for third and final passage. Clerk Golick.
Ordinance 18-31, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli, in ordinance to create Fund 241 and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department Grant Fund for 2019.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage of 1831.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage and adoption of 18-31. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
This is for the Traffic Safety Grant for $12,500. This includes the seeing of a safety movie for the children, bicycle safety, crossing railroad tracks, and crossing the streets. This is located on the east side of Civic Center.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Which happens to be in the 3rd District of the City of Hammond. Thanks for a wonderful grant on behalf of the Police Department.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Markovich. Yes.
Final passage and adoption of 18-31. Nine zero.
President Markovich, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Next item of business on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. City Clerk Golick.
Item A, ordinance 19-01, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. In an ordinance, amending ordinance number 8514, also known as the Hammond Zoning Ordinance, and amending ordinance 9310, also known as the Marina District Development Plan Unit Development District Ordinance for purposes of amending certain provisions for the Marina District Development Plan Unit Development District Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for 1901 to pass through first and second reading with the notice of intent to consider for 1/28/19, and council has a whole committee meeting scheduled for 5:15 on 1/28/19.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spatelli for first and second reading, and refer to council as a whole, with a intent to consider on January 28th in a caucus meeting at 5:15 on the 28th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item, Council, City Clerk Golick.
Item B, ordinance 19-02, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, in ordinance to create a new section of Title III, Chapter 30 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to council president.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of 1902, refer to council as a whole on January, with a committee meeting on January 28th at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
So move. Motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Rakos. That 19-2, ordinance 19-2, passed on first and second reading and referred to council as a whole. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes. This, because there is no definition in Title III, Chapter 30, specific to the responsibilities or authority of the Hammond Common Council President, after having served for a little over two years, I thought it necessary that we put some paper to pencil, and penciled the paper, I should say, and outline what some of the responsibilities and authority of the Hammond Common Council President are. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I find that kind of amazing that all of a sudden this particular ordinance would come up, seeing that she's relinquishing the seat as President and is no longer the President of the Hammond Common Council with all the disrespect it was given in the previous tenure of her being the President. It's unbelievable. But anyway, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Councilman Higgs, I always appreciate your perspective. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is resolutions. City Clerk Golick.
Item A, a resolution, 19R-01, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution confirming the appointment of Ronald Mullins as a Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of resolution 19R-01. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Rakos, that final passage and adoption of 19R-01. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing that Mr. Mullins is in our presence, I just want to emphasize that it's very important to me in respect to dealing with human relations and dealing with the community as a whole. So I feel it's very important that you communicate and give me any information pertaining, any issues pertaining African Americans, Hispanics, or anyone in the city of Hammond as it relates to human relations. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Markovich.
Ann Markovich. Yes.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Next item, second resolution, item B.
Item B, resolution 19R-02, sponsored by Councilman Higgs. A resolution confirming the appointment of Gary Wilson as a Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of resolution RT, 19R-02. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spatelli, for final passage and adoption of 19R-02. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing that Mr. Wilson is in my presence, and I hope that you understand the responsibilities and duties in this capacity as being on the Human Relations Commission, and I hope you the best, and I would hope that your future endeavors in serving on this commission is one, a pleasure.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Next item of business is new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Recently, I read the paper today in regards to Lost Marsh, and according to the testing, there is no contamination, and I'm sure the mayor is aware of that as well. So I am very happy to find out that there is no contamination currently there.
Mayor Tom.
Mr. President, congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just got back from the doctor. I missed caucus. I wanted to talk about this a little bit. Councilman Kalwinski, I haven't had the chance to talk to him in particular about it, but we did extensive, I don't know if you guys remember, about three or four months ago, we bought a new x-ray, super expensive machine in the Hammond Department Environmental. It was like a $30,000 piece of machinery, and it's coming in really handy right now. We just did round two of our testing. We did initial testing all around the Lost Marsh area, north basin of George Lake. We did it all through the whole area, 125th Street, south basin of George Lake, and we found that we had elevated levels of lead on the north basin of George Lake. Closer, you got to Federated Metals, big shock, right? We all know that we used to have a lead plant there operating for decades. However, the interesting thing is, I know you guys have been around a while, about seven or eight years ago, if I remember correctly, the federal government, actually, I think it was even longer.
Longer?
Ten years?
At least.
2008, federal government capped the north basin of George Lake and presumably removed all lead. And the cap is literally a cap. It cannot be permeated by anything. The water stays out and everything. It's literally a cap that locks in all the contaminants that were there for years. And if we find contaminants on top of the cap, that means that that's new lead. It's interesting. So we had a fire in August, September timeframe at Whiting Metals. Whiting Metals was upset that the Hammond Fire Department responded. They felt they could take care of it on their own. And since that time, about 10 swans, the white swans with the long neck have died. The autopsies performed on the swans found poisonous levels of lead in their system. I made the presumption that the fire and the poisoning of the swans was related, and just about everybody up there called me a dumbass. And they said, this is not related, but I still maintain, I think they're related. I've been mayor 15 years, and I don't remember swans dying left and right like we have this year. I don't believe in coincidences. So I asked the Hammond Department Environmental Management to go and order round two of testing and focus on the north basin, because we didn't really find any type of lead in the south basin of, in the Lost Marsh Golf Course, 125th, all that was clean. Now, along the north basin, we focused between the bike path and the water, and we found around 100 parts per million, mid-100 parts per million, 150, getting up to 200, and a couple spots of 400. The closer you got to Federated Metals, the higher they were, but they were like 400. Now, we see what's going on in East Chicago where they forced all the residents out because they were built on a former lead plant. The readings they were getting there were like 50,000, 80,000. 400 parts per million, right now, if the EPA found your yard to have 400 parts per million, they probably wouldn't do anything. Okay? It's not great, but it's not dangerous. It's not an action phase for the EPA, but it's something for us to pay attention to. So I've asked Ron and his crew to go back out and do really thorough analysis on between the path and the water, between the water and the houses, just all, and then we're going to get on the private property over there with Federated Metals and all the property around there and do it around there. And if we find new lead, and new lead came from someplace, and there's only one lead plant in that whole area, and they insist that they had nothing to do with what's going on, but I don't really believe them, I'll be honest with you. And we're probably going to have to get into the water. And if we get into the water and we find lead on top of the cap, that's new lead. Now, what we think is happening is the lead came from the fire and went onto the land, and with the rain and everything, it washed it into the water, and it's sitting below the water line, but on top of the cap. So when the long-necked swans go into the water and feed off the bottom, they're ingesting lead. The other animals can't get down that deep, and we think that's why they're dying. We think it's new lead, and if it is, there's only one lead plant in that neighborhood. So I want you to know that we're on this. I released round two of testing today, and we're doing round three as we speak. That's up to date, up to the minute. I think they were out there today doing more testing. But that piece of machinery purchased for HDIM is paying off in spades. I don't know how much it would have cost us. I guarantee it would have cost 10 to 15 grand, but we've done already, and the thing only costs a little over 30, so it's going to pay itself off in this process alone. So, does anybody have any questions about that? It doesn't seem like the newspaper's too interested. We dropped a press release on this on Friday, and they didn't run it. There was a small little mention in the Post Tribune, so I told them to drop it on Go Hammond today, and we put it out there, and I put it on social media, and not a lot of people are sharing it. There is a community meeting coming up in Room 200 at College of St. Joseph. I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but it's on the press release.
January 22nd.
Thank you.
At 6:30.
We're going to basically talk about the second phase that I just told you about, and we'll have the third phase results by then as well. But the good news, if there is good news, is it's not extremely high. It's higher than normal levels, but it's not an action phase for EPA. That made me feel better. But we're all over it, and I just wanted the councilmen especially and all you all to know. So thank you very much.
Good. Reiterate what the mayor said, there's going to be a meeting on Tuesday, January 22nd, at Cal College in Room 200 at 6:30 in regards to the Hammond Department of Environmental Management releases testing results. So, thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
At 1003 Becker Street, there's a tree that's been sitting there for three weeks. I've reported it to have it removed. I don't know if it's the city's property or if it's someone privately owns it, it's right across the street from Sergeant Acocks' home, so I'm requesting a letter be sent to code enforcement so we can determine whether or not that property is privately owned or it's the property of the owners, but the tree needs to be removed. Also, 1046 Becker Street, there's a property that has a green sticker on there, and I'm hoping they can have that demo as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, your second.
So I could...
Second by Councilman Torres, that letter be sent to the addresses that were specified. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and finished business?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I just wanted to, it's the beginning of the year, and I just wanted to remind everybody that next year is going to be a challenging year for all of us when we do our budget, and we're all filing for office right now, and everybody's all happy going down there taking pictures. I just want to reiterate to everybody, it's January, we're going to be doing our budget in July, and it's going to be tough. So if you have ideas about the budget, I suggest we do it when it's snowing and not when it's sunny out. I think we should start talking about this. If we do nothing, and when July hits and you guys look at the bottom line, you may not be as happy as you've been before. So I am always looking at ways to cut government. We've done a really good job over the last 15 years. Obviously, if we don't do any more cutting, which is an option, but if we don't do any more cutting, we're going to lose five or six million dollars next year to the property tax caps, which is great for the taxpayers. The taxpayers are happy, but that falls on us. And it's not just us, it's school cities, it's libraries, it's other cities and towns, but in Hammond in particular, we're looking at a five to six million dollar loss in our budget. Fact. And in the sanitary district, I know they're real worried about the Hammond Sanitary Sewage Department, which is going to lose about $3 million to their property tax revenues, and there's no way to fund that department right now. That's a nightmare scenario that we're facing next year. And if we do nothing, and we just enjoy ourselves through the winter, and when July comes rolling around, don't be pissed at me. Don't be pissed at me. I didn't create the tax caps. I didn't, we got issues with gaming right now. To our west, Illinois is getting their act together. We're going to have a casino coming real soon. We got issues to our east. I don't know if you guys have been paying attention, but Gary's making a real hard pitch right now to take our money. And there's a lot of people lining up behind him. So we got a lot of issues facing us right now. I just wanted to make sure you guys, A, if you're signing up for another four years, you're ready for this next four years, it's going to be rough. B, let's keep in mind that Mayor McDermott didn't create the situation that's facing us. And C, if you got ideas about cutting government, I'm all ears, all times. I've proven that. But if we don't cut, don't complain to me in July when you see the numbers. That's all I want to say. Okay? I don't know if you have any questions or...
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Another priority in the city of Hammond to me is certainly the police and fire, but we are facing some real serious matters in 2020, and we need experienced people that are really willing to do what's necessary to do the initial cuts so that people are people are not screaming and hollering. There may be some people actually losing their jobs within the city.
Yes, sir. Mr. President.
Councilman, Mayor McDermott.
Like I said, I'm all ears, and the thing is, it is an option to run like we are right now. That's an option. If we do nothing, that is the option we're choosing. If you guys are interested in other cuts, please talk to me. You know, seventy-five percent of our money goes to public safety, and I'm a supporter of our police and fire departments, a big supporter. I know you all are too. Okay? And it is an option to run with status quo. You know, next year, the city court's closing down, and we're going to have a lot of employees looking for relocation out of that. We're losing a lot of staffing in the city clerk's office next year. I'm doing my best to try to accommodate those employees when they're looking for other spots. It's tough, but I always, if I see clerk's office or judge's office, I'm always trying to move them to the front of the line and get them relocated, because that's what I told you I'd do. But, you know, we got issues in sanitary district next year, we got issues on our budget next year, and if we do nothing, because I think we've done a good job to get to where we are, you know, and I'm not going to complain because the taxpayers are getting one-third of a tax break next year, but that, at the end of the day, the buck stops with us. We got to make tough decisions, and as tough as this year's budget was, it was tough. Next year's is going to be brutal, and it's not going to get better after that. So we got to change the way we operate, and if we don't, don't complain to me. Please. It's too stressful.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business, but for some of the people that are here see some new faces. If you wish to address the city council about any city issues, we have a sign-in sheet. So if anybody would like to speak under public expression, you're welcome to do so. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm ready, Mayor. Let's get it done.
Any other new and unfinished business? Finished, new and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. George Stoya.
George Stoya Robertsdale, I just wondered, let me catch my breath here. I thought that the sanitary district was run, I was, we've been told time and again that no taxes, no property taxes were used on the sanitary district. So does that mean we have the prospect of looking up at higher fees, Mayor? I mean, well, I know, I'm just, but I'm speaking, you know, I just, anyway, so I don't understand then what the, what the problems would be with the sanitary district if, I mean, they've gotten some bonds, they've gotten, as far as I can understand, they've got what they need, and if they're run by fees, I don't understand where the property tax aspect comes into play. Anyway.
Mayor McDermott?
Just to answer, George, the sewer department in the sanitary district runs off property taxes, always has, okay?